Good evening. I call the Planning Commission regular meeting to order. It is now 6:30 PM. We are located here in the Simamish City Council chambers. And I forgot to say that it is Thursday, April 19th, 2018. So, welcome, everybody. The next item of business is roll call. I'll start on my left tonight.
Larry Crandall.
I meant on my left's left.
Oh.
Mark's left.
Thanks for stealing my thunder, Larry. Mark Baughman present.
Chino Faro.
Larry's still here.
Dana Collins.
Jane Garrison.
Eric Brooks.
Rituja Endapure.
Excellent. And with all seven commissioners present, we do have a quorum this evening. The next item of business is the approval of the agenda. And I need to do something a little different because of the new software we're working. I'm not going to do the -- is there any objections? So, I'll actually need a motion and a second to approve the agenda from now on.
I move the agenda be approved as distributed.
Second.
There's a motion to approve the agenda and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. There's zero. So, the agenda is approved unanimously. The next item of business, and same thing for the minutes, same thing for adjournment, we'll just do the motions and seconds. So, the next item of business is the approval of the minutes. And this is the minutes to the April 5th, 2018 Joint Planning Commission and Human Services Commission meeting. So, are there any amendments to the minutes? No?
No.
Okay. So, I just need a motion to approve them.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes from April 5th, 2018. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. And that, the minutes from April 5th also pass unanimously. So, the next item of business is public comment. And this is the time for non-agenda public comment this evening. People wishing to speak have three minutes to speak if you're a person and five minutes to speak if you're representing an organization. So, please come up to the lectern and state your name and place of residence.
Got the green light. Hello, my name is Mary Victor and I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Simamish. So, for non-agenda topics, I wanted to speak about some research that I remember from. It's probably over a decade ago, but I think it's important to things that you're considering. So, I read somewhere, and I honestly don't recall the actual thing or the place, but I had read somewhere that there was a company. And while everybody was working well and doing well, they wanted to find a way to make people happier and possibly more productive because they thought they were related to each other. So, they had a big building and it was probably like a manufacturing or something or other. And it was like the walls were painted pretty gray. So, management came up with a really inventive idea. We're going to paint the walls a different color and we'll make it like a happier, brighter color. So, they painted the walls like a peach or a cream or something instead of gray. And it was really cool because for the next three months, people came in, they were smiling, they were happier, and productivity actually seemed to go up. So, that was cool. So, after about six months, management was going, "Well, what should we do now? Because we'd really like our people to be happy and obviously productivity is good for the economics." So, one of the uninventive people said, "Let's just paint the walls gray again." So, they went back and they painted all the walls the same color it had been before they changed it last time. And productivity went up for about three months. And what I remember from that research, which I don't recall exactly where, is that people like change and they like something about them. And we need to think about that. If the environment around us is always static or we say the same thing over and over, you don't notice it anymore. Kind of blurs into the oblivion of the life that you live. And this ties into, I actually attended a couple of the committee meetings today as well to make sure that I'm informed. And there was kind of a draft version of the branding thing. And they were getting feedback from people in a number of things and it's really great information. But one of them is Simamish is beige and boring. And I did see a lot of things about Simamish that you would not, you would not be surprised to hear. But I didn't see the word vibrancy and I didn't see the words that there were neighborhood characters, which are things that you're working on. So, I just wanted to come with these kind of pre-meeting comments today to talk to you and just give those because they were rattling around in my head from my day and hope that you will consider them as you consider things in front of you tonight or other times. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Paul Stickney at 504 228th Ave., Southeast. And I just am up here to say hi and to let you know that I walked up here from the town center. And I know transportation concurrency is on the projects today. And my comment is not about concurrency, so I just had a short thing to say tonight about the transportation, the TMP, the Transportation Master Plan, which is coming next. The one thing in Simamish we really can do, and it hangs together with the comments Mary said about change, is create a town center at the right critical mass to optimize housing for needs and wants over cycles of life, to optimize jobs and services, which are tied to the optimal amount of both single-family homes citywide and smaller homes in our centers. That will create a walkable environment and a size appropriate to really have meaningful and effective and suitable internal and external transit that'll really make traffic less worse. I've been in real estate a long time on the east side, since I moved here in 1990. And I tell clients, traffic isn't something you can avoid, but you can try to choose to live in a way and a place to make it less worse. Properly sized town center is good for people, good for finance, the environment, city character. And I'm not going to say it will alleviate and eliminate traffic, but it will make it less worse. That's my comment.
Thank you for your comment this evening. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak this evening? Okay, seeing none, the next item of business is old business. And tonight, we will hold a public hearing and deliberation on the 2018 Sign Code amendments. And before I get into what we need to do tonight, I wanted to acknowledge that Commissioners had questions at the last meeting. And it's my understanding that staff has answered some of those questions on an individual case-by-case basis. And as long as Commissioners are satisfied that their questions have been answered, we don't need to go into all those questions tonight. But if there's another question you have or you haven't been satisfied by staff's answers, we can address that after the staff presentation.
With the Chair's permission, I was looking at the signs. And for the public, if they're watching, and for everybody in the room, a reminder, next Wednesday, the 25th, we're going to have a kind of a public forum on housing. And then on Thursday, the next night, the 26th, there'll be one on homegrown trees, excuse me, because we're growing houses and trees. Okay. Just a reminder, and you're welcome, they both start, if I recall, at 6:30 PM.
That's right. Okay, so, the order of events for tonight will be, first, we'll hear a presentation from staff. And like I said, we'll all have opportunities to answer our final questions about the Sign Code and any of the amendments that were in our packet. Second, I'll open up the public hearing and ask for public comment on the Sign Code. And I received two emails later this afternoon, and I think we all received them actually, but I will plan on reading them during the public hearing, so remind me if I forget. One's from Central Washington University and the other's from Issaquah School District. Third, I will close the public hearing. Fourth, someone will make a motion. Staff will hopefully have a proposed motion for us to work from. Then, we need a second, we can start deliberating. If there are any amendments to the main motion, we'll go through those, we'll deliberate on those, and we'll hopefully end up with a final vote that everybody's happy with. So, that is sort of the order of business. So, with that, I will turn it over to staff. And I think it's David Goodman tonight.
Yes, thank you Chair Collins and good evening Commission. I'm also joined by Doug McIntyre, Senior Planner, and Charlotte Archer, Assistant City Attorney. So, as Chair Collins mentioned, this afternoon, I suppose, we're going to be holding a public hearing on the proposed Sign Code amendments. We'll deliberate on the proposed amendments, I think we'll have a good discussion, and then the Commission will vote on a recommendation to send over to the City Council. So, this evening, we're going to go over a bit of what we talked about at our last meeting on this topic on March 15th. That'll lead right into the proposals that we're going to present to you today. We'll go over briefly what is contained in those proposals. As you may remember, we were returning to you today with two different proposals. One's a no electronic reader board proposal and the other is a limited electronic reader board proposal. And then finally, we'll hold the public hearing and move forward from there. Before we get in, I know we covered this last time, but I thought it was a good reminder, some of the different things to keep in mind as we talk about how we regulate signs here at the city. Couple issues that need to always be at the forefront. One is content neutrality. So, that's the idea that, especially with non-commercial signs, that we're not propagating regulations that regulate signs in a different manner depending on what they say. So, we need to treat every message in a similar manner. Similarly, speaker neutrality means we can't privilege one type of speaker over another when it comes to providing certain avenues for them to exercise their right to signage and their right to speech. Finally, or not finally, but next, as we discussed last time as well, we are able to draw a distinction between commercial and non-commercial signage. We're able to draw some more distinctions within the commercial space as we are in the non-commercial space where we mostly have to adhere to the content and speaker neutrality doctrines. Another thing that's not as much a legal issue, but more a practical issue, whatever regulations that the Commission recommends to the City Council should be those that are reasonably enforceable on the city's part. And finally, we want to ensure that we're protecting existing public forums. So, that basically means that if there's a existing forum where somebody can state a message or get out their message in some other way, it's, we need to be careful about taking away that forum and making sure that we're not, or that there are existing ways that people can get their message out if the rules are changed in some manner. And you might remember this graph as well. Just a reminder that the more regulations and the more restrictions that are put on where you can place signs and what you can do with signs, the more legal risk that puts the city in. So, last month, on the 15th, we presented a relatively broad set of amendments that would allow, that would have allowed electronic reader board components in most non-residential uses as well as, that would have, excuse me, that would have allowed electronic reader board components in a lot of non-residential uses such as business, schools, religious organizations, government agencies, on all different types of streets in the city. And those would have been allowed as part of otherwise permitted pole or monument signs. The Commission, and in addition to the electronic reader board signs, we also presented some other cleanup amendments that had to do with open house signs, some typos, and some other more minor amendments that we didn't consider to be particularly substantive. The Commission indicated an opposition to allowing electronic reader board components at all. So, in response to that, the staff proposed, and what we're bringing to you today, are two options. One in which we eliminate all categories of electronic sign and another that we're calling a limited electronic reader board option, which is a modified and stricter version of the regulations that we brought to you last month. So, the no ERB proposal that we're bringing to you, as I mentioned, removes any mention of electronic reader board components, so they would not be allowed at all under this proposal. And we also removed the two other sign categories that had already been in the code that are not very widely used, but also would have allowed for an electronic sign, and that is time and temperature sign and changing message center signs. A couple Commissioners had pointed out that in addition to the two signs in front of the high schools on 228th, I think there are two, a grand total of two other signs. One is at the corner right at the exit of Eastlake High School to the north, and then the other is driving up the little hill towards the, in the QFC Shopping Center to the south here. And so, the image on here, I realize, is a bit misleading because those, the two signs pictured here at the high schools and those, the other two that I mentioned, wouldn't have to come down in the case that we decided to remove all the electronic signs. They would just turn into legal non-conforming signs. So, in addition to removing the electronic reader board components and time and temperature and changing message center signs, the code, we would retain an existing changing message center sign category that's only, that's only allowed in Town Center Zone D. And we can get into that a little bit later, but that's an existing sign type that we are not proposing to change even under the no ERB proposal. The D-zone is what we're in right now. It's, I think, the civic zone, so we have the City Hall here, the library and the YMCA. So, there's no commercial or residential as part of that zone. It's just strictly a civic zone. So, as for the limited ERB proposal, what we have brought forward to you today are, is a proposal to allow electronic reader board components to be up to 60% of an otherwise permitted monument sign. That's different from what we brought to you last month in that we got rid of the 40% minimum requirement and we would no longer allow them as pole signs. So, the example on top there, the Eastlake High School sign is an example of a pole sign, whereas the Skyline High School sign is a monument sign. So, under the limited ERB proposal, we're only allowing monument signs, we would only allow monument signs to have an electronic reader board and not a pole sign. Or any other type of sign for that matter. We're also proposing to limit those electronic reader board components to principal arterial roads only. And I have a map after this that'll show you exactly where those are, but that's essentially just 228th and then Issaquah Falls City Road are our two principal arterials. We're also proposing that those electronic reader board components must, can only change their message at an interval of one minute or greater. They can only operate during normal business hours, so 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Outside of those hours, they wouldn't be allowed to be used, to be operational, except under emergency circumstances. And like the no ERB proposal, we are also going to remove the time and temperature and changing message center sign categories as well to further limit the scope of potential electronic signs. Here's a brief, a little map of the principal arterials, which are outlined in red, and then all of the parcels along those principal arterials that would be eligible to have an electronic reader board sign under this proposal. So, there's a little, there's a legend to the right there, but you can see, it's actually not that many parcels. You've got the two, two commercial areas in red, or actually, three commercial areas in red, the two on 228th, and then the Klahani Shopping Center down to the southeast. And then we have a number of churches, a couple of schools, and then some government agencies. You'll also note that Town Center in the middle there is kind of outlined in red and is white. As part of this limited electronic reader board proposal, we're not including Town Center as a potential location for electronic reader boards. And Doug can speak a little bit more to that. The basic reason that we're offering is that Town Center has a specific aesthetic and the specific design requirements that are part of the Town Center plan and that we feel are best left alone in this instance because we didn't want to, you know, we didn't want to start changing the, what the potential feel and aesthetic of the Town Center was in this manner. And we felt that would only be appropriate under a more comprehensive review of the Town Center design standards. So, this is a bit of a summary of the amendments. I think this might be of more use during the Commission's deliberations, but we can use this as you want. As we did last time, the middle column there represents what our staff proposal is as part of the limited ERB option, as well as on the right-hand side, some other options in case you want to amend that in one way or another. And I'll return to these later if necessary, but just to get through the presentation here, same deal here. This one's talking about streets and some other, some other dimensional requirements to do with electronic reader boards. And as our next steps, the dates, the City Council review of these proposals has been pushed back to June. So, on June 12th, we'll be bringing this to City Council. And then one week later, on the 19th, we'll have our Council public hearing. So, that is the end of our presentation. And Doug, Charlotte, and I are happy to answer any questions you might have before moving ahead with the public hearing.
Thank you very much. And thank you for all the comprehensive materials that were in our packet. It's really helpful. So, I will open it up to questions at this moment. Questions from Commissioners, that is.
So, the options that you talked about like three slides ago, is that something that we will be discussing or is that something that happens after public comment?
I'll answer. So, what we'll do is, we can have those slides come back up while we're deliberating.
Okay.
Because what we'll do is, we'll start with a motion and then motion may say, you know, let's say it's the no ERB. Then say, a few Commissioners feel strongly that they want to add something back in, then we can kind of use that as a menu to add things back in. I think that's how we should do it. So, usually, we talk about our opinions and the way we feel after the public hearing, after we've heard the public's testimony. No more questions? Okay, my only, I did want to ask Mr. McIntyre if he could go into a little bit more detail on limiting, or actually exempting Town Center from any sort of electronic reader board and just kind of go into the reasons why.
Sure. I think David did a pretty good job of covering the concept behind what we were proposing. As you mentioned, Town Center does have a very specific aesthetic that is sought after. In addition to that, our sign regulations for Town Center, as you have probably noticed at this point, has an additional level of design review for all signs. So, there is a specific type of aesthetic, not only with Town Center, but also with the Town Center signs that we're trying to get. And with the commentary that we heard on March 15th, I believe, it became pretty apparent to staff that the Commission felt that the aesthetic impacts resulting from electronic reader board components could put that in jeopardy and could be in conflict with that. So, we looked into ensuring that the Town Center was addressed appropriately according to the comments. So, yeah, it's more about, it's more about the aesthetics and, and again, trying to strive for timeless signs, which is some of the language that comes out of the Town Center plan. It's meant to be signs that are timeless elements of the Town Center environment.
Thank you for that. Okay. If there are no other questions, then I will start the public hearing. So, public hearing is now open. And members from the public, I'm forgetting if it's five, is it three minutes or seven minutes? Seven. Okay. So, each person who'd like to speak tonight during the public hearing has seven minutes to speak. So, come on up, Mrs. Victor.
My name is Mary Victor and I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Simamish. I may use the PowerPoint. I might not. I'm trying to speak to some of the things that staff has brought up. First of all, I wanted to tell you that changing message boards were originally, I believe, in a 2003 ordinance because you knew that there was going to be a Town Center and you were going to change where the City Hall was and there was going to be an aquatic center or something eventually. So, they had the idea for a community bulletin board and they wanted it to be able to be electronic. So, it was originally in the code from that. And then, when the school, I don't know why the pilot program was done, but between 2009 and 2014, a pilot program was allowed for electronic reader boards. And during those five years, Eastlake did the first installation in 2009 to 2010. I happened to be a parent at the school at the time. And then Skyline added theirs afterward, which is why you see the difference in technologies between the two. And Eastlake was monitored very heavily. They measured the size of their letters and timing of the signs and everything. And I can tell you that Eastlake loves their sign. It costs $50,000. It would, they had more money to do a bigger sign, but they weren't allowed to. And if you try to do the 10 to 12, 12 to 10 to 14 inch letters, you can't spell "congratulations" on it or orchestra or something or other. So, over time, they've developed like a two-line and a three-line option. And I do have photos of those in here, but I don't know if I'll get to that. So, if I'm not able to get to this, I'd like to make the request that my PowerPoint, whether I'm able to give it in the seven minutes or not, which I probably won't, if that could be included in the public hearing record. So, anyway, so, Eastlake had their sign. And their sign is a pole sign because if you look at the front of Eastlake, they don't have very wide on either side and there really isn't room for a gigantic monument sign. So, they wouldn't be able to have it if you had a monument sign. And I think because an electronic reader board has cables to it, or they also have one that works with radio, you really need to allow the pole sign. And there's another one of that, the Columbia Athletic Club one over by Pine Lake is that. So, I think you need to allow monument signs as well as pole signs. And then there's a lot of churches, elementary schools that use the changing message center, which has the black plastic letters. You guys have seen, those are four to five inches tall. And they really need to be able to do those. So, I'm a little bit concerned about that just being deleted from the Sign Code. I think you need to keep that and have it maybe separate from any of the electronic options that you have because those are very useful. And when I get to my slide presentation, it will actually have some of those. So, I wanted to talk about some of the things that were brought up. If you choose no ERB, no electronic reader board, Eastlake and Skyline would be able to continue to operate their sign and they could maintain their sign, but if there was any upgrades or changes to it, they would not be allowed. And I know that Skyline's costs more. They're very expensive. And I think if you're going to allow them, and I think you should allow them because they provide a very good benefit to the community, you should allow the colors because you have to see the sign in the light of day when it's very bright. You have to see it at night. You have to see it when the weather isn't very good. And being able to have the colors and things, that's part of the technology and that's part of my presentation I'm not getting to yet. But I really think limiting the color is not good. If it's something distracting and their safety, definitely I agree with that. But I think only allowing a legal non-conforming sign means their sign has to die over time and they're not allowed to use it, which would be a great loss. Maybe you've heard from them on that. So, I'm for monument and pole signs. I'm for electronic reader boards. Also, the arterials that you saw, that was a very nice map that David Goodman showed. The reason a lot of the schools are along there is I went to one of the Heritage Society presentations and like Discovery Elementary, that was land that was granted a long time before there was any development to say, "Hey, you're going to need schools." Most of where the schools are were land grants. They were all done on a section line, which happens to be 228th. And it's very important. So, that's actually why you have that corridor. And I do feel it is appropriate for schools and for people to be able to use message boards on there because it goes way back to a long time ago in King County, long before us. I'm kind of aggravated with the city that you guys will do a pilot program and then you never follow up on it. So, there was a pilot program for the signs and Eastside Catholic came in and said, "Hey, we want one too." But they were too late, so they were never allowed to have one. And then when the code was deleted, I understood that it was beyond the work plan and it's getting brought back as it was promised. But you guys haven't gone out and actually solicited the feedback from the school. So, in my free time, I've gone and talked with them and I had actually submitted some changes last year for it, and I'll see if I can read those. We wanted it to be able to be high schools and/or higher education because we knew Central Washington might be coming and they have, and I believe they're interested in the sign. And then on here, it says, "Sign should not contain moving graphics, text, or video." And you are going to have moving text because typically those signs will display by a really nice scrolling feature in, otherwise they just have to blink on and off. So, I think that should be, you can't have graphics, animations, or video because you will have moving text and I think that's appropriate. And then all the current use, if you look at Eastlake's when it's working and Skyline's is they switch about every three to five, six seconds, 10 seconds at the longest. And I honestly, even the splash page on the city's website, I believe, changes every six seconds. I believe it is designed well that you could have between six to 10-second displays. The original pilot program only allowed you to have one change every three minutes, which was gruellingly long and that just wasn't okay. And even a minute isn't enough. Like right now, the Columbia Fitness one, it can't even update the minute, every minute. Like right now, the Columbia Fitness one, it can't even update the minute, every minute, because it's trying not to be an ERB, but it is. And then for the letter height, we went from five to 24 inches, because the little plastic ones are four, five inches. And that's really good, and you wouldn't want the letters to be really big, but the size of the sign is going to limit it. So you really could have used the prior pilot that you have. You don't really have to write new code, and you could have done these small changes, and it would have incorporated the people that went through the signs, were monitored, and be able to use that information to help the city. So I'm hoping that you will consider that. The other thing I heard that I'm a little bit worried about is only from eight to five. My kids used to go to jazz band in the morning. Their downbeat is at 6:30, and if it doesn't even turn on until eight, they'll never see the sign. And there's a lot of football games and things that you celebrate that go on after school that the kids would like to be able to see. And if you only have it on when they're actually at the school, you don't have the opportunity to do that. And I kind of do agree with the Town Center aesthetic, so I think the decision that they're doing there is fine. But these are the changes I wanted to put in specifically for the public hearing. Like I said, I'll get to this at the seven minutes at the end of the meeting, to give you visual pictures on things. But I really think that they can add some vibrance. Instead of signs just telling us what not to do, we can have signs that celebrate, that can announce things, that can be reminders, they can have a little bit of fun color, or the way that they move, it's not distracting. In fact, it might help you with the traffic, because people would be entertained while they sit there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
My name, Paul Stickney. I'm at 504-228th Ave. Have just some short comments this evening. I guess the word would be brief. If the electronic reader board signs are allowed under this limited phase, does that apply to those that can be seen from, you know, public places but on private property, like the Washington Federal Reader Board down by Starbucks that's up on the building? And I walked over to the Eastside Catholic Open House that was really cool a couple days ago, and they have an electronic reader board up way near their school. So I guess the question is, are private property reader boards under regulation or not? Odds are they're not. But I am asking the commission, and if not, the staff, so I'm getting it correct on how I ask. So that's the first thing. And the second thing, do we, and that's the king's "we," we as the city, have any information ever from any surveys, or informal polling, or city halls, as to how in general a majority of the public feels about reader board signs, one way or the other? And that's it. I told you I'd keep it short.
So, Mr. Stickney, you can stay up so we can answer your questions. It's my understanding that under the, let's say, under the limited ERB policy, that it would include both private and public properties. So electronic reader boards would be allowed to all commercial and non-commercial entities?
Cool. And I looked over the packet, and I just missed where it said that, and it certainly could have been me. I just didn't catch it.
It would be any entity along 228th, or along any of the principal arterials in our city that wanted to have one. And I think Mr. Goodman had a map up earlier that showed all of the churches, schools, some of the shopping centers, all of those.
And my only clarification, in the spirit of what's right, not who's right, is a, you know, private road, like Eastside Catholic, way up in there on their private road, if they didn't have that reader board now, that you can't see from a 228th, would that be allowed or not?
Probably not, because I think the private road would not be a principal arterial.
Yeah. And so if that's real clear in this, then cool, I just didn't see that.
Okay. And then info about how the majority of the folks in Sammamish feel about this? I don't, I'm not trying to be funny, but I'm just looking at the audience, and it doesn't seem like too many people are very interested in this issue. Maybe they just don't know that we're talking about it tonight, and I hope that's the case. But I don't think we have really any anecdotal, or I mean, sure, we all have anecdotal information from who we talk to on a daily basis, but I don't think we have any formal information, and there wasn't a survey or anything like that done.
No. And my only comment on that is, there's probably been between seven to 10 statistically valid surveys done in Sammamish since incorporation, and odds are signage was not a part of them, but was just curious, in case it was, it wouldn't have been, or it wouldn't be that hard just to look back and see if there were any questions about the sort of commercial aspect of signage. That's all.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right. So what I'm going to do right now, unless there's no one, well, there's no one else here to speak, so I won't ask for anyone else to come up. The two emails that I received today, or that the entire Planning Commission received today, the first one is from Lori Rowe. She's the office manager at Eastlake High School. And I apologize, because earlier I said we got an email from Isaguas School District, and that is not correct. It's just from Eastlake High School. And this is what she had to say. "Our electronic sign provides communication to the community about reminders and happenings at Eastlake, i.e. school events, hours, closures, sports, accomplishments, congratulations, PTA events, et cetera. We welcome guests such as other schools, dignitaries, and sister schools from Japan. Since our sign is currently not working due to some communication issues, 'technology be our friend,' is in parentheses, we have gotten many calls and comments from the community asking why we are not using it. It's very disappointing to our own school community that we are not able to use it. It is greatly missed. We have come to rely on it after all these years. Hopefully, next week will be again online. When the sign was purchased for approximately $50,000, we were restricted as to how big the sign could be and the placement of it. We would like to be able to update and/or upgrade as necessary or desired. Please ensure that the city sign code would allow and supports this per changes being proposed or amended." And again, that's from Lori Rowe, oh, that's from Lori Rowe, Eastlake High School, and that is Lake Washington School District. Thank you, Lori. Okay. That's okay. And it's just that I was envisioning an email from Isaguas School District, so I think that's why I said it earlier. So anyway, the next one is from Elaine Harney. She's the site director at Central Washington University, the Sammamish Center, and her email is quite short. It says, "Hello. Per today's committee meeting, we would like to pass along CWU's desire to keep the option of having an electronic reader board sign in the future along 228th. Thank you." And that's all. So those are the two comments that I received by email, and so that takes care of it. So I'm going to close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed, and we can start with a motion. I was hoping that staff has a motion prepared, and we probably have them.
There is a suggested motion on the cover page for the agenda item. Thank you.
Is this motion for limited ERB or for no ERB?
So the commission would need to discuss that and determine, but the intent of the recommended motion was that it actually covered both scenarios, in the event that Planning Commission chose one or the other. We wanted to give you a general starting point, and from there, commissioners could, based on their input and deliberations, move to adopt, or recommend, sorry, to city council a version of the proposal.
I guess I'm just confused. If we use this recommendation, then what amendments are we accepting?
So at the end of the, let me pull it up real quick. So the motion would have to specify if it were to be the no ERB, or the limited ERB option, or one of those options as amended.
Okay.
But the first portion of that recommended motion covers all the chapters that are being amended. So that would cover all the actual amendments. So you could go all the way up to Sammamish Municipal Code, comma, as presented in the no ERB option, or the limited ERB option, as amended or not.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was kind of getting at.
Sorry if that was confusing. It is a point we could clarify further. There are two options in front of the commission. We did that, as David Goodman had mentioned, as a way to address the somewhat overwhelming response we heard from commissioners about really not wanting any ERBs throughout the city. However, we talked in the March 15th meeting about the fact that that might be something that Planning Commission holds to be true, but city council might also want to look at something else. So we suggested providing what that might look like if they were to take up a limited option, so that the commissioners could understand what might get put forward. But ultimately, you will be recommending one option, with the understanding that there is a quote-unquote "backpocket" item available in case city council chooses to go in the opposite direction of that.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So I will do this, is I'll ask for a motion, and whatever motion comes forward, then we can have a second. We can start deliberating after the second, and the deliberation is the time when we can start stating our opinions. And then actually, to make a change to the motion, we actually have to start making amendments. So we'll kind of see how it goes. Doug?
I move to recommend to city council to adopt proposed amendments to chapters 21A. Point 15, 21A. Point 45, 21B. Point 15, 21B. Point 45, and 23.10 of the Sammamish Municipal Code with limited ERB.
I second that motion.
Okay, there is a motion and a second to recommend city council adopt proposed amendments to chapters. I'm not going to read the whole thing. There's a second and a motion, so we'll just start deliberating now.
I don't mind starting to say why I'm suggesting the limited ERB.
Go ahead.
I don't agree that a primary arterial should be used for advertising. I just really don't, but it is. And legally, it has to be a public forum. So it's more of a legal issue at this point. Why I don't like it is because it's a safety problem, and I think that's why freeways are not allowed to be public fora. And I'm not sure if that's why they're not allowed to be, but I would guess that. And I believe our primary arterials, with all their access points, have similar safety issues, and I don't think they should be used for advertising. But legally, I think for now, we have to go with it.
I wanted to have a, just a quick, I really appreciate what the chair did, because we had public comment that was very new to us, and probably will affect some of our deliberation tonight. So thank you for entering those two in, and the two entities, the one for Lake Washington School District, and the Central Washington University probably appreciates that also. They're not here, but they're being heard.
I too am in favor of the limited ERB option. I think one of the things that I liked in the amended staff recommendation was that these would be limited only to monument signs. So actually, I did have a question around that, is that, you know, for example, the Lake Washington School District sign is on a pole right now. So would they have to bring it to a monument sign, or would they be not in compliance? Because I think, you know, as has been discussed before, the aesthetic is really important. And I think one of the questions that was, I think, brought up by Commissioner Baughman last time, was that, you know, we don't want to see something, an ERB from Lake Sammamish. And I think that sort of takes care of that. Like if you have it, a monument sign, it's on the ground, and, you know, not many people are able to see. I think my only concern is the timing, because I too am actually a consumer of that electronic reader board. And, you know, I think that the timing that is suggested right now is, you know, it is proposed that it shut down before the kids go out of school, and the kids, you know, high schools especially starts at 7:00 a.m., or the kids are there. So it would be, I would like to see it expanded, and not such a short time.
Commissioner Ndepeure, can you tell me what timing you would be interested in?
I would be, I would recommend that we go back to the time that was before, from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m.
10:00 p.m. to, okay, off between 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m.
That's right.
Okay. So available between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m.
Yes.
Okay. So let's first deliberate, unless, if you want to make an amendment to change the time under this, we can do that. So you can make a motion to amend the limited ERB proposal to change it to that time, and then there would be a second, and then we can deliberate on just that, just that, just that portion of what we're talking about tonight.
Do I have to actually mention the, okay. So I move that we amend a section 21A dot 45 dot 060 regarding the time between which the ERB should be turned off, and amend it from 5:00 p.m. Instead of 5:00 p.m., we have from 10:00 p.m. onwards, and then instead of 8:00 a.m., we have it as 6:00 a.m. So the ERB should be turned off from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m.
Excellent. Okay. Is there a second?
I have a second motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to amend the main motion to change the time restriction. Let's, I'll keep with what you're saying, to have it off, to have the electronic reader board signs off between the time of 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. And so now we can deliberate on just this specific issue. So during this time, we're just talking about the time on the electronic reader board. And then we'll vote right after we're finished deliberating on this specific item. Okay? So does anyone have anything to say about that?
Yes. So I think the time is great, but I think we're making the time decision in the context of being a school sign only, which that's not necessarily, we haven't nailed that down yet, or if we're going to nail that down. So I think when we start thinking about it, the time aspect, in the context of anybody having a sign, not just a school, that makes it a little more difficult to, you know, say, as far as I'm, you know.
Yeah, you're right.
So I see this being convoluted potentially.
A can of worms.
I agree.
Right.
I will state now that I am in favor of the no ERB proposal, so any of these amendments, I'll vote no on. So I'm just stating my opinion right now.
I call for the question on the amendment.
Does anybody, do you guys?
Make one comment. I think some of these things perhaps seem fairly important, but I would just point out that my perception would be on time. People will probably sometimes pay attention to the rule, and sometimes not. And this seems like one thing that later on could be changed relatively easily, without too much difficulty. If we were to say no ERBs, then you could allow them later. If you allow them, you cannot go back very easily. So I think some of the context for these items may need to be choosing between something that, once you allow it, can't be undone. But changing the time, probably a pretty easy thing to change later. So I guess what I'm saying is, I'm fine with the time. I think that it will be unenforced anyway, and I think that it'll be a complaint-driven issue anyway. So I'm not sure that the time is that important.
So let's vote. There's a motion and a second to make an amendment to change the time to have the electronic reader boards off from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. All those in favor, say aye. And can you guys raise your hands, just so I can count better? Say aye and raise your hands. Okay. So one, two, three, four. Okay, so that's four. Here, no. Okay. So four ayes, and anyone say no? Okay, and three no. So the four ayes carry, which means that the new time in the code, if the main motion passes, will be that the electronic reader boards will be turned off between 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. Okay, so, yes.
What about the poll point she brought up? What about the poll?
Oh, I'm saying that again. I forget.
I had mentioned that, my question was that, would the Lake Washington School sign have to be brought down, to be in compliance?
I'm going to ask staff I'm going to ask staff in a minute, but I was, when you're asking me, I'm thinking it's a legal non-conforming sign, so they can keep the pole sign up as long as they don't make any changes to the sign? If they wanted to, you know, make a bigger sign, or it's kind of like a remodel, right? Like, if you need to remodel your sign, you'll probably have to bring it down and make it a monument sign. But I'll double-check with staff and make sure I'm right on that.
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay. So now we're back to deliberating on the main motion. So if anyone has any more amendments or anything else they'd like to say, go ahead.
Oh.
Just go for it.
Okay. I'll be, I'll try to be quick with mine, because what I heard tonight from the entering into the public comment and some of the research that I've done over the past couple of weeks, a lot of things came to mind, and I'll just, I've written them down, but it'll be very, it eludes me sometimes, but I'll be as brief as I can. The city itself may want electronic reader board for those, I mentioned this before, amber and silver alerts, reader boards for the Y, the teen center. And I went to the, it was really great at the teen center about three weeks ago, the student talent show, wonderful. I think it would have been better attended by people other than families if there might have been a reader board there. So now I'm speaking, you know, for these people. Central Washington, it's interesting, there's a monument sign there already, so let's go with that. And I said, other entities. Then one came to me, when I visit Portland, Oregon, the bus system has reader boards that tell you the time of day plus the expected arrival of the next bus. And I wonder if our transit system would want to install those, because this is a hunch. I think our transit system and our bus stops, covered bus stops, will increase over the next very few, very, in the near future. So are they included in, I want, since I like transit and I ride it when I'm in places like Portland, it's sure helpful to know the time of day, what bus is coming, and when. So that's enough for me right now.
Good point.
Good comment.
Ken, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I wondered, there was a public comment referencing the manual reader boards, it was just the letters. I don't believe that this covers those. Am I correct in that?
Yeah.
Question?
Yeah.
Okay. So the comment I wanted to make is just to be, suggest that we think a little bit carefully about this, in that all of the conversation has been around the school reader board signs, and it's easy to get captured by that concept in your mind, that that's what we're talking about. But I believe that in reality, this, if you thought about it a little bit differently, there's a new monument sign outside of the Safeway Plaza that's about 15 feet tall and 20 feet wide, I'm guessing. I believe, according to what this says, 60% of that sign could be an electronic reader board. Now, maybe I'm overreaching there a little bit, but that's what it sounds like to me. So I think it's really important that we don't just have this discussion based around strictly schools, because that's not really what we're talking about. Yes, what the schools do is wonderful, and, you know, I think everybody would generally be in favor of that, but what this, even this limited version does do is allow much more than that. And whether that will happen or not is really up to us to try to anticipate. But that's really what we're talking about, is the potential for commercial signs, and I believe there's no height limit, if I remember correctly in what I saw. So there could be a lot of, a lot of potential out there for more signs, like what we see on the Washington, on the bank building down by Starbucks. And we just need to consider that when we're recommending something to the City Council, it's not just for the schools, it's for a lot of other things potentially that could be out there.
Good comment.
I agree with Mark. Yeah. I mean, I fully support the schools having their electronic reader boards. I think they do serve a great purpose for the schools. It's just then the proliferation of it throughout the other sections of the communities, that's my concern. I would not be in any way against allowing the schools and, you know, any of our kind of public amenities having such signs. It's just, it's the commercialization side of it, that that's the side that concerns me.
I think, maybe a clarification from the staff. There is a size limit to those signs, right? To the ERBs? I thought there was.
There's a, we have the 60% size limit, which is just 60% of the permitted space of the permitted area of the sign.
Right, but the actual permitted sign, that also has a size restriction.
That's correct.
Isn't that the 32 by eight feet, like 32?
For, for public, I don't have it in front of me, but for, for public agencies, I believe it's 30, 30 square feet is the limit, and then for non-residential uses such as churches, I think it's 25 square feet. For commercial, it's much, excuse me, it's much larger than that. I think the largest single sign you can have in the community business zone is, I think, 145 square feet, and that's for the largest, you know, that's for the largest commercial development you can have in the city.
But, I'm sorry, but the height, I remember the little matrix that you had, there was no height restriction. So while the sign may not be full-size, like I suggested a big sign, but also they can be mounted high.
I guess they have to be a monument sign?
Yes. So Commissioner Baughman, are you, are you referring to a height limit on the electronic reader board component or on the monument?
Yeah, since they have to be on monument signs, I apologize, you're right.
But I don't know, you could have a really tall monument sign.
I think they're limited.
Full sign allowed.
That matrix that you had said no height limit, but actually, the height limit would be the monument sign height limit, I understand.
Yes. And the, the height limit for, again, that largest possible sign of 145 square feet would be 20 feet high.
Not small.
And then it's one sign per?
Not small.
And it's one sign per development or entity, right? Like, they can't put a reader board on, they had two entrances to, so it's just one, yeah.
Yep.
Go ahead, Commissioner Brooks.
So if our primary use of the roadways is for safe passage and hopefully laminar flow of traffic, right, I think that we could, we'd do well to eliminate as much distraction as possible. I mean, we've got the whole cellphone against the law and all these other things. So any distraction, I think, is, it's not serving an informational purpose, right? Now, I hear, so that's kind of like the hardcore, like engineering approach, look at it. But you do have this, this layer of reality of the schools and this kind of public benefit, this community benefit that comes from that. And I think that's what we're seeing support for. But I think as soon as we start going over that edge, that slippery slope, that's where everyone starts kind of recoiling. And I think that this, you know, it's a great job of you guys have done on this and trying to kind of accommodate these two different paths. I think that there just needs so much more development before we can really take anything forward. We're going to be here all night trying to piecemeal this thing together to make sure it meets what we're trying to do. And I think there's just a lot, a lot more probably staff work that needs to happen before we could do that. I probably would do the no ERB out of, because that's why I would do no ERB, just because I don't think this is ready for the prime time yet.
I feel like if we can establish a height for electronic reader boards, we would solve the issue of the commercial problem. How high can an electronic reader board be?
It would not be able to exceed the height of the sign itself, so.
So why don't we just limit the height of electronic reader boards to 12 feet or something, which would make it very unattractive to somebody like Safeway?
We can make an amendment, if you want to make an amendment, we could make an amendment and vote on it.
Another option you might consider, you know, we did this with the Town Center last year when we did our sign code amendments, as we can say, you know, the sign may be up to 60% of the total sign area with a maximum of 40 square feet or some, some number like that. So you could also cap it, 60 square feet up to a certain amount. So that's another approach.
But it could be still way up in the air going, which I think is the most offensive part.
As tall as the height of the sign. Correct.
So if we could limit the height of the electronic reader board portion, component, then we've, I think that would make, that would satisfy me for the limited ERB.
Do you want to make an amendment?
I would make an amendment that we limit the height of ERBs to 12 feet.
There's, did you say, there's a motion and a, or there's a motion? Is there a second?
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to amend staff's recommendation to limit the height of a monument sign to 12 feet.
ERB.
We can't, it can't be just for ERB, it has to be monument signs. Is that correct?
That's not.
You, so if I understand correctly, I think what the suggestion is, is that the electronic reader board, so are we talking about height off the ground, or are we talking about height?
Off the ground, I think.
Off the ground. So I think, I believe you can say that the electronic reader board component may not be higher than 12 feet from the base of the monument sign? Is that what we're getting at?
That's what I'm trying to say.
Can you say that again, David, so I can write it down?
I will try. The, the electronic, no.
You got it right. The electronic reader board.
Electronic reader board sign may not exceed 12 feet above the base of the monument sign.
I would suggest usually.
Yeah, the electronic reader board component.
Excuse me.
Cannot exceed.
12 feet.
12 feet. But tell me about the base again.
Above.
Above the base of the monument sign.
Yes.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second to limit the electronic reader board component, it cannot exceed 12 feet above the base of the monument sign. So now we can deliberate on this specific piece.
I would just point out that I think the ceilings in here are probably close to 12 feet.
That's better than 20.
So this is different than, because pole signs are not going to be allowed, right? So this is, so let me envision this, this is where we have a monument base, and then on top of that is a reader board?
It's like skyline sign. Can you guys put a picture of a skyline sign?
Right.
So then we're saying skyline sign could be up to 12 feet.
Yeah, much closer.
It's a configuration, but it could be up to 200, 100 and some odd square feet. It could be super-sized in some zones.
Right, okay.
It would be a huge, and 60% of it reader, electronic.
Yeah, okay. So we're trying to restrict the height of that.
Of how, where that electronic part is.
Okay. All right. Okay, that makes sense to me. Okay.
Any more comments?
I'm just, just for clarification, and so would this be, restriction be for all kinds of ERBs or this amendment for commercial?
Everything. That's the thing, we can't regulate signs based on the content. So whatever we allow for schools, it has to be allowed in the commercial area and has to be allowed for a business.
But also for sign? Because, I mean, in our packet, you know, where it says height limits, there are different limits for different.
Different areas, yeah. Mr. Goodman, can you make that clear? Help me make that clear, because.
If, if the, if the commission would like to limit the height of the, of an electronic reader board component to 12 feet above the base of a monument sign, the only type of sign that that would essentially relate to is a community business sign and a neighborhood business sign. Community is 20 feet off the ground, and, as a height limit of 20 feet, and neighborhood and office have a height limit of 15 feet, the height limit for the other types of signs, so for school signs or for, for church government signs, is less than 12 feet. So it would de facto be less than 12 feet.
Okay. Does that answer question? Okay. All right.
Well, the only comment I have is, thinking, reminder, our, our function here is to provide advice to the City Council, and I like what staff is trying to do originally, to give the, the non, no reader board with this, the other component. I think either way we go with the, with this, the main motion, is that we need or should want to get it to City Council, and staff and City Council can work on, you know, fine-tuning it further. City Council has a lot on their agenda. I don't know when the branding will be finished. I think the contract for North Star goes through December.
Remember, we're talking about height right now.
Okay. Anyway, that's, sorry.
All right. I'm going to call for the vote. So all those in favor of the electronic reader board component not exceeding 12 feet above the base of the monument sign, and again, this is an amendment to the main motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was, one, two, three, four. Okay, so that's same four ayes and noes. No.
And Eric, two.
Okay. Eric and I, two. Okay, that was five, two. Okay, so five ayes and two noes. So the height limit passes. Hmm. I should have voted for that, because I should have voted for the most limited thing possible, but, oh, well, it passed.
You said no.
I said no, and I can't go back, so. Anyway, the next, so let's go back to the main motion. I'm going to say my comments. I haven't had a chance really to state my opinion, and then I can entertain further opinion from the others or more amendments. So when we finished the sign code update in 2017, Eastlake, or Eastside Catholic came to speak in favor of allowing the electronic reader boards. And, you know, I thought they should be able to have one, and I also thought with Central Washington University being brand-new, that they should be able to have one, too. And I thought that was just such a no-brainer in my mind, you know, yeah, of course, they should, they should be able to have that, so when they take that up, that's, I'll vote for that. The problem is, and I should have seen the problem, because we were working on, we were working on the Reed versus Gilbert case the whole time, we can't just let them have their electronic reader board signs, we have to let everybody have their electronic reader board signs. And I'm not in favor of allowing electronic reader board signs, especially in the commercial aspect. And not only that, but I don't think it's necessary for the elementary schools or the middle schools. I think there are effective ways of communicating that don't include, you know, flashing electronic reader board signs. For me, it's an aesthetic issue. I don't feel that the electronic signs fit into our natural forested, environmentally sensitive and friendly habitat that we have here in Sammamish. I think it speaks to exactly what I'm saying, that the Town Center will automatically exclude the electronic reader boards, and it's based on the aesthetics. I, there are some really good examples, some neat things that some, the two churches that I know of, East Ridge Church and the Lutheran Church, both on Issaquah Pine Lake, or Issaquah Falls City Road, they have these gorgeous printed signs that they change out, I don't know, every two weeks or so, and they're pretty colors, and they're fairly large, and they fit right within their, I think they're, it's either monument sign or a pole sign, I don't know, they have multiple poles. I guess my point is that there are ways of communicating events other than having the flashy signs that I think are distracting and just don't fit within our community. And we have a lot of Principal Arterial Road in our city, and I think if we open it up now, we'll really regret it. And like Commissioner Brooks said, there are just so many things that get opened up. It's just like a Pandora's Box. If we open this up, we, I don't feel like we spent enough time going through all of the contingencies of having a limited ERB policy. So that's, those are my comments. Commissioner Baughman?
I'd just like to ask a question that I'm not sure that I understand. As, as we make a recommendation to the council, will the, will the two options be communicated to them in some way if we don't do that somehow? I mean, will, in other words, if we sent a recommendation that said no ERBs, will they be blind to the other option? Or will somehow you communicate to them that we had this discussion and we did have these two options so that if they choose to dig into one or the other, they can do that?
Yeah, so that's a great question, thank you. The, if we back up all the way to, I believe it was spring of 2017 when we took this up the first time, city council reviewed the planning commission recommendation as proposed, made tweaks to it, and then adopted a code with the recognition that staff would come back with a proposed amendment for the ERB. And that was, of course, under a different makeup of the council than it is today. But there was direction by city council to look into that topic and bring it back. So that's, that's what we're doing here tonight. So we, we came forward with the proposal to look at ERBs. And again, developing the two options was something that we thought was a good idea. One, because we heard a lot of feedback on, on the ERB, kind of those reactions to allowing ERBs under the new landscape of, of rules. And so, so that's kind of a long way of saying, at the end of tonight with the recommended option, we will, we will go forward to city council with the recommended option, whatever that may be, and a letter that goes with it. And in, in some cases, as we've shown with previous items, we have written up a short dissenting opinion for votes that were not part of the majority. So we could, we might likely do that tonight. However, to the extent that city council is going to review the full bore other option, that is only if they express a desire that they want to go a different direction than what was recommended to them. So we are going to come forward with just the recommended option and as a quote unquote back pocket item to address concerns that we think they might have based on previous, going back to 2017 commentary from council, that would be the purpose of that, that second option, just so that we have the discussion with the commission that you know what's in that other option, but we will go with just the one recommended option. Sorry for the long answer.
In the background section of our memo, that's usually how we communicate to city council, we have a memo that Larry and I sign, that staff prepares for us and Larry and I sign it. In that memo, I would make sure that it talks about, in the background section saying that we talked about both options. And if they want to dig deeper, I mean, this is all public record, so they should be able to find it fairly easily, right?
So it depends on what the commission chooses to vote on tonight, but certainly we would go forward with the recommended option as we, as we always do with our planning commission recommendations, given what Chair Collins just said, that we might have a recommendation memo that talks about any dissenting opinions we may have. However, in this scenario, we know that there might be some interest in talking about allowing ERBs, so therefore we wanted to have that discussion with commission as well. But again, just the one recommendation.
Okay, so any other amendments or important comments?
No, I just wanted to make some comments on what you said, Chair Collins. I think, I think you're right in pointing out, you know, that we might open a Pandora's box or something might go, but I think there are two things that I wanted to specifically touch on. One is, you know, the ERBs actually, we reuse the same sort of board to do different messages. And, and again, I know we focused a lot on schools, but I'm, because I think they are actually the main consumers or, you know, proponents of this. I think schools don't have resources that they can print out, you know, beautiful banners for every occasion. So I think there is, you know, sort of an environmental aspect to it. And I think, you know, the fear here is, and I'm absolutely, I agree with that, is, you know, we'll see all these crop of like ERBs everywhere, but precisely because of the point that you stated, that, you know, businesses want to be creative, they want to attract customers, so they will come up with newer sort of ideas on how to, you know, advertise their business. And I think for them, most likely, you know, ERBs might not be a good option because the message is very static. It's very one dimensional, right? So, I mean, I see your point, but I also see the other point, which is, I, I hope there won't be a proliferation of, you know, just ERBs. And we won't be like how it's on I-5 near 5, which I know all of us are thinking about.
What I do worry about is that the commercial entities have the money to pay for it, whereas the schools don't. And the signs can cost, you know, anywhere between $25,000 and $50,000. And is that really what we want, our schools, you know, investing money in? I'm not sure.
Well, and then as, if, if you do have commercial entities, then the school signs that are now kind of standouts now become less of a thing, right? And they're actually moving away from that which they were trying to achieve, perhaps. It's kind of maybe unintended.
Okay. There is a motion and a second. Hang on, I got to get back here. There's a motion, this is the end, unless you, anymore? Okay. There is a motion and a second to move, to recommend city council adopt proposed amendments to the chapters 21A dot 15, 21A dot 45, 21B dot 15, 21B dot 45, and 23.10 of the Sammamish municipal code in the limited ERB recommendation.
As amended.
As amended. And the two amendments, the first amendment is to amend the time to having the electronic reader boards off between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. That was, that was approved 4/3. And limiting the electronic reader board component cannot exceed 12 feet above the base of the monument sign. And that passed 5/2. So all those in favor of the recommendation or the motion that I just stated, say aye?
Aye.
Commissioners Crandall and Indupuree? All those opposed, say no. No.
No.
One, two, three, four, and five. Okay, so five commissioners say no, two commissioners say aye, so the motion is defeated. And in this case, we need a new motion. So we need a new motion to recommend the no ERB proposal.
Chair Collins, can I make a comment real quick before the commission proceeds in their deliberation? So the recommended motion would still apply up to the point in, in a different scenario, would still apply up until the point of Sammamish municipal code and then.
Oh, so can we make an amendment?
So the code amendments, so there would need to be a new motion.
Needs a new motion.
For a, an option of no ERB. To include the code amendments as presented in the recommendation.
Does anyone want to do that? You just have to read a lot.
I move directly into the, that the city council adopt proposed amendments to the chapters 21A dot 15, 20A dot 45, 21B dot 15, 21B dot 45, and 2310. 23 dot 10 of the Sammamish municipal code as presented with the no ERB option.
And is there a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to recommend the no ERB policy to city council. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's six ayes and all those say no?
No.
One no. Okay, so the motion carries and we have decided to recommend a no ERB policy to the city council. And all the other cleanup amendments that staff has also recommended are included in that recommendation. So we have completed this section of the evening. Good job, everybody.
Clarifying question. So all the other code amendments that were made to the, not relating to ERB, did we make a motion on them for them to pass?
That was included.
Okay, that was included. I mean, I meant to vote for them, but I think the whole combination.
Right.
I just wanted to congratulate the, not only the commission, but the chair and the staff. I'm sure city council is watching this. And one thing just came to my mind, they passed, maybe electronic reader boards are good or bad, but the past tenant at the city-owned Central Washington University property, they might have had a sign on their reader board saying, "Sign up for trips to Mars." Do you remember who the last tenant was?
I didn't, I needed that help. All right, the next item of business is new business.
Chair Collins, may I suggest that we take a five minute break so that I could grab the other crew?
You want a break?
Please?
Yes. Let's all take a 10 minute break, how about that?
Thank you.
Back at, my phone. Back at eight. This thing is slow. And the next item of business tonight is new business. And tonight we have Cheryl Paston from the Public Works Department here to give us an introduction on transportation concurrency and level of service. So I will turn it over to Cheryl.
Actually, I'm going to step in, Chair Collins.
Okay.
Doug McIntyre with the Department of Community Development. I wanted to just make a couple opening remarks on the topic of concurrency and LOS before you tonight. As, as Chair Collins mentioned, Cheryl Paston is the deputy director of Public Works and she's to my right. And to her right is Kendra Breland, who is with Farr and Peers. And they're the prime consultant on the work the city is doing on concurrency and LOS as well as more broadly, our first transportation master program, or, sorry, how do we say that, master plan, the TMP. So you have likely seen Kendra in front of city council and actually Cheryl in front of city council as well, because this topic has been in discussion for quite some time now. It's, it started out broadly as the TMP and then it, it kind of shifted in some ways and became more focused on one element of the TMP, which is concurrency and LOS. And Kendra and Cheryl will do a great job of explaining exactly what we mean when we say that. And so with that being said, the city council has passed a resolution which outlined a schedule for legislative review, and that is in your packet. And a reason why I bring that up is because it's going to feel a little bit accelerated. There are, there is a very tight timeframe to turn this edit around. And the edits include amendments to our comprehensive plan as well as our Title 14 and Title 14A of the Sammamish municipal code. So you're going to get kind of, it'll feel like drinking water from a fire hose. But the good thing is that tonight we're here to give you the 101 on what we mean about concurrency and LOS. So, so you'll have that foundation to then dive more deeply into the topic of concurrency and LOS. But we want to make sure that tonight is the night where you ask your questions, you get feedback from the consultant. It can be about anything technical or about the process as well. So, so again, this is kind of a precursor to a really focused, slightly intensive effort on some very specific items directed by city council. So with that being said, I will turn it over to Cheryl and Kendra, and I will be here after the presentation slides to help answer any questions that may arise. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, it's good to be back. It's been about two years, I think, or maybe a year and a half since, since I was last here. And certainly the, the makeup of the board has changed, so we're glad to be back on a different topic. Transportation, again, as Doug mentioned, please interrupt, you know, whenever a question pops in your head, feel free to, you know, let us know and we'll be happy to stop and answer questions. So we will start off with the, the topics that we'll be discussing tonight. The first is, I'm going to start really high, just a really high level overview of the Growth Management Act and how it relates to transportation. We'll talk about the council priorities. We'll give you a little bit of a peek into what the transportation master plan is, what the goals and the priorities are. And then we'll really get into the meat of the, the discussion tonight, which is the level of service in our concurrency program. And then we will talk about what the council's direction is for updating the concurrency program and then finish with next steps. So Kendra is going to take the bulk of the presentation from here, but again, please interrupt us if you have any questions.
Thank you and good, good evening, Commission. My name is Kendra Breland, I'm with Farr and Peers. So first of all, just kind of why are we here tonight? In terms of transportation planning, the, the state Growth Management Act really sets a foundation in terms of what's expected from communities with respect to transportation planning. And so when we think about the Growth Management Act and what its, what its expectations are for citywide transportation plans, there's kind of five expectations. And as you know, a big focus of this effort is getting to a place where we're updating the city's transportation element. So there are kind of five expectations. One is that we're, we've got travel forecasts that align with land use assumptions. So a transportation element is really a functional component of the, the city's comprehensive plan. So the, the transportation element is really looking to accommodate the growth forecasts that are assumed within the land use element. So it's really important that as we're thinking about, you know, kind of how are we accommodating for the transportation system, we're thinking about how much growth is the city anticipating and where is that growth going to be? Second piece of it is intergovernmental coordination. Something that we all know is that, that travel doesn't start and end at a city's boundaries. Many of us start our day in Sammamish and work somewhere else or go somewhere else for services. So it's really important that we're thinking about how is Sammamish's transportation system coordinated with that of Issaquah, that with, that of Redmond, that of Washita, King County Metro, Sound Transit. Third piece is that we define level of service standards, and that's been a real focus of the effort we've been working on with council, and we'll talk about that more tonight. But level of service standards are really nothing more than just the city's objectives for how its transportation system is going to perform. So you can, you can define those in a number of ways. The way that we've been talking about level of service, and we'll talk about it further tonight, is really on the amount of time that a driver is waiting at an intersection. But as a part of the transportation master plan, we're also going to think about defining those kind of expectations, performance expectations for the transportation system based on the experience of folks walking, biking, and taking transit as well. The, the next, the fourth kind of requirement is that we identify a project list that achieves those level of service standards over time. So again, if we say something about how our transportation system is going to perform over the next 20 years with growth, we need to identify a realistic project list that can accommodate those level of service standards. So that's kind of the fourth expectation. And then the fifth is the real kicker, and that's that the ultimate list of projects needs to be financially realistic. So that's, I think, where the state makes it a, a bit more challenging and really puts the challenge to jurisdictions, that your level of service standards need to be fairly realistic, such that you can identify and afford a project list that accommodates that. So we've been working, as you know, since essentially last summer with council to really think about, you know, what are these priorities, not only for your transportation master plan, but also for your concurrency policy. And specific to the concurrency policy, these are some of the messages we've heard from council. One, that driver experience should be a key measure of system performance. And so while council fully appreciates that walking and biking and transit modes are really important, they also recognize that driving is a really key experience for most Sammamish residents. They want to make sure that our level of service standards are really mindful of that. They asked, the current level of service standards really only consider the PM peak hour. And so they asked that the updated level of service standards, think about both the AM and the PM peak hours, given the importance of school kind of start times to the travel experience of the Sammamish public. The third item that they've asked us is that the program is easier to understand. If you've spent any time reviewing Sammamish's current comprehensive plan, you might have come across table T8, which is, which kind of guides how segment analysis is done. And the current councils really kind of, the current and the previous councils really said that that was very inintuitive for the public, and so they've asked us to come up with something that's a bit more intuitive. The fourth item is that the council has asked that we leverage best available data. There's, you know, since kind of some of your standards were put in place over 10 years ago, of course, big data, cell phone data, in-racks data has become available. And so council has asked that as we're crafting new policies and procedures, that we're thinking about that best available. that we're thinking about that best available data. And council has gone so far as directing staff as to purchase INRECs data so that we can look at travel time data in real time. And then the fifth item here, or the sixth item here, I guess I'm not counting fifth, is that they asked that we maintain our ability to charge high-impact fees. Samamish is number one in the state in terms of the impact fees that are charged for transportation. So that means that the development community is a real partner in delivering the transportation system within Samamish, and council is interested in maintaining that partnership. So I'm going to go on to the next slide unless there's any questions. Okay. So the city hired my firm Farr and Peers about a year ago to partner with the city to help establish a 20-year roadmap for the community's vision for transportation. And just as we think about, you know, some of the things that we're trying to achieve, it's a safe and connected and accessible transportation system. It's a fiscally prudent transportation system. It's one that manages and supports community needs. It's one that maintains kind of the status quo that growth pays for growth. And then the city has really asked, city staff has been very instrumental in making sure that we're being really creative and forward-thinking, that we're thinking about kind of future technologies. Samamish is a well-to-do community. You've got early adopters as they relate to transportation and technology. And so they've asked that we really think creatively about how these kind of new technologies can help us in delivering a future transportation system. And then last but not least, I did want to point out, as a part of the transportation master plan, that, you know, we also recognize that while transportation facilities in Samamish are important to Samamish residents, we also recognize that transportation facilities outside of the city's control are really important to Samamish residents' kind of transportation experience. Just to give you an example, a big focus of our discussions with council has been kind of the SR202 intersections. SR202 in Sahaliway actually isn't owned by the city. That's within, that's kind of in land space. It's in unincorporated King County, and it's managed by Washdott. But what happens with that intersection clearly really impacts residents' daily commute experiences. And so thinking about those partnerships and really kind of how can we think about them as a part of the transportation master plan, and be really forward-thinking about investments in those sorts of facilities are something that we've been tasked with. So when we think about the actual transportation master plan and the scope of work for that project, we kind of think about it in three buckets. First of all, providing complete connections for all modes. Kind of how can we make your city's system safe and more efficient for all people? As we're thinking about transportation facilities, again, we're not just thinking about the car. Car is very important. Making sure that traffic continues to flow is very, very important. But also, how do we complete that system such that if you're a Samamish resident, you have a choice in how you travel? Which is something that I would posit you don't quite have today. We did a fair amount of community outreach over this past summer, and we really heard a strong desire for a system that's more multimodal and accommodating of folks, whether they choose to walk, drive, take the bus, et cetera. Second piece of that is that, as a part of this project, we may come up with recommendations for projects that are different than what you've had in the past, or recommendations for policies that are different than what you've had in the past. So it's really important, as a part of this project, that we are coming up with recommendations that are supported by the community. We've got a public outreach subconsultant, Studio Cascade, that's engaged in this project to really kind of lead that community conversation. It's critically important that, as Planning Commission and City Council is approaching voting and approving this plan, that this is something that's supported by the community. So really, developing a plan that has civic champions, that has public buy-in is critically important. And then, last but not least, this is a community that, in the past, has been very successful in making sure that it's generating the level of funding that it needs for projects, that it's not putting itself in a lot of debt. So we've been asked to develop a plan that's fundable and implementable. Pieces of that are developing a modern concurrency system. That's what we'll be talking about mostly tonight. But also kind of supporting the city in developing a flexible impact fee program that can help fund projects. So when we think about transportation planning, it's really important to remember kind of the wide variety of tools that are available to the city, be it short-term projects that are helping the city with development management, to longer-term projects that are helping the city to really optimize and plan its project list. So just wanted to show kind of this wide variety of tools. I know we've been really focusing on level of service standards and concurrency in our recent presentations, but I did want to remind this body that when the city, as the city manages its transportation plan, it's got, it can, or its transportation system, it can be collecting innovative data, like the INRECs data that you've purchased. It can be thinking about how it's managing development regulations. It can be thinking about its public work standards and how it's providing the best possible transportation system. And then from a long-range perspective, the transportation master plan and your traffic impacts fee program really are the things that help, from a long-range perspective, make sure that we've got the right transportation projects in place over a 20-year period. So it's just important to think about that the city is looking at the transportation system in real time. I've been in Steve Linashevsky and Cheryl's office and Stephen Chen's office when they're looking at traffic cams of what's going on at an intersection in real time, all the way to looking out 20 or 30 years in terms of what do we think are going to be the needs based on development proposals that are either in place or we anticipate in the near term. So from the perspective of level of service and concurrency, the Growth Management Act is, again, you know, as I mentioned earlier, that's a state requirement for transportation. And it really, you know, requires the city, first of all, again, to set level of service standards for how its transportation system is going to operate. And then it sets a concurrency standard that essentially says that, as the city develops, it needs to make sure that it's maintaining those concurrency standards over time. And the tool that the Growth Management Act provides to cities to ensure that it's achieving its level of service standards over time is really impact fees. And impact fees are what allow the city to ensure that growth pays for growth and to help them fund the projects that are needed to accommodate growth. So I'm going to go into level of service standards. So the city of Samamish has currently three ways of measuring level of service. The first is intersections, which again is kind of looking at how much time a driver is waiting at an intersection on average. The other two that are currently on the books, but may be taken away with current council action, are roadway level of service, which is looking at kind of a comparison of how roadway segments are performing in terms of volume to capacity ratios. And then kind of as a buildup to that would be, actually, and I see we've got a little typo in this, or I guess not, roadway quarter level of service, which is a volume-weighted average of how many roadway segments, kind of multiple over, in a group, are performing over time. Something that we came to council with, because there were very much concerns over level of service approaches two and three, was that most communities are actually just using that intersection or level of service approach one. So in our current work, and we'll be sharing that in a moment with you, we're looking to kind of have Samamish conform with how most communities measure their level of service standards.
Kendra? Can I?
Absolutely. Thank you for the break.
Just a technical question about level of service, intersection level of service. Is that, when you say vehicle delays, how does that calculate between the various approaches? In other words, if you have an intersection with a large volume of cars and a very small road coming into it, if that one fails, is the whole intersection failing or at a low level? Or how is that calculated?
I appreciate that question. Actually, let me push forward to this slide here, and I'll go back so that you guys don't miss anything. But that's an excellent question. So the way that we evaluate level of service in intersections really depends on what its intersection control is. I'll explain what intersection control is. So when you think about intersections that you might approach, there are some intersections that have a signal at it. So everybody, and so in terms of those signals, those intersections, the way that we measure it is based on the average delay of vehicles. And so it's, you know, obviously, some of the approaches might have a slightly longer delay than others. But the way that the Highway Capacity Manual, which is the national guidance for measuring this, just has us look at what is the average delay? And the intention here is that you're trying to get that average delay as low as possible. Other sorts of intersections that we might think about are maybe a side-street stop-controlled intersection. So think about an intersection maybe along 228th, where you have a minor street that comes up and it's got a stop sign. So the stop sign controls the minor street, but 228th just keeps going. The way that we assess conditions at that intersection is how long is the minor street waiting? And that's what we're looking at, because they're the only ones that have any sort of delay imposed upon them. So as you can see on this slide, essentially, there are different delay thresholds that are set up. Whether you're a signalized or roundabout intersection, we allow for a little slightly higher delay than if you're a stop-controlled intersection, which would be either a two-way or an all-way stop-controlled intersection. And if you're wondering, why are there different thresholds between these two types of intersections? It's very safety-oriented. Again, remember, this is national guidance. And so think about it, that when you're, if you're a driver and you're in a signal, you're unlikely to violate that red light. If you've got a red light, you're going to kind of sit there and wait and obey it. And at a roundabout, it's kind of hard to violate a roundabout. Whereas if you're at a stop sign, if you've been waiting for a while to cross 228th, you might be a little bit more tempted to tempt fate and jump out there. And so that's why the national guidance actually has lower thresholds for the stop-controlled intersections, because they realize that people might tend towards a riskier behavior. And the whole intention of traffic control in general is safety-oriented. So I don't know if that helped answer your question. I'm happy to go into more specifics.
So if I could just, one follow-up, and then I'll shut up. So does that mean that you could fail an intersection exactly like you've described and take action, spend money, make modifications to improve that side entrance off the stop sign so that it's not below a level of service that's been defined? So you have three cars in an hour that have an improved experience, but you have 5,000 cars in that same hour that have a slightly worse experience, but maybe not below the level of service that's been defined for Sahaliway, for example?
That is a wonderful observation. Yes, that is correct. As we came, and we actually came to council on Tuesday night, and we've got eight intersections that by 2024 will not meet the city's standard. And so we, as staff, were tasked with coming to them with recommendations, and that was something we were very mindful of. We actually, and I wish I brought this slide tonight, we brought to council a slide of the pros and cons of different types of intersection control. And I think your observation of a side-street stop-controlled intersection versus imposing a signal on the entire street, we tried to convey that, you know, hey, there are pros and cons to these. Yes, you may technically be lower, but you're actually imposing delay to a lot more people. So I think that's a wonderful observation. Okay. I'm going to just go back. Oh, perfect.
So I think you answered one of my questions, which was going to be about the signals versus the roundabouts.
Oh, sorry. But my other question is, you know, when we're measuring LOS, and I think in the packet, you know, I think the direction is to establish LOS standards. I was wondering, is that, is the direction to measure it within a particular timeframe? Because I'm sure these change throughout the year. So that is one question. And then the second question is, so you mentioned at the beginning, you know, 202, for example, even Issaquah Falls City Road. So how do we measure the LOS when we're intersecting against, you know, other cities? And, I mean, who controls, you know, I mean, maybe F is acceptable for Issaquah, but not for us. And then how do we manage that?
Thank you. Those are very good questions. The first one to answer, kind of time of year. The city collects counts in April, and they're very careful to make sure that those counts aren't being collected during a spring break timeframe. So April is kind of the intention, that that's like as representative of a time of year as you could come up with. Of course, summer would be a little lower. So what they're trying to do is, a typical time when school is in session, people are generally at work and not on vacation. So that's in terms of the time of year that we're collecting, we're trying to do that. So we're representing, you know, kind of what is a good time of year that we should be planning for. The second part of your question, in terms of level of service standards and how they vary by community, where the intersection resides is definitely the level of service standard that should be adhered to and planned to. So certainly for 202, Washdott is the ruling jurisdiction. But what we recognize is that Samamish might have higher expectations for 202 than Washdott does. Samamish might have higher expectations for some of the intersections that are in Issaquah that are really important to Samamish than maybe Issaquah does. And I think just beginning to monitor the traffic conditions, talk about, you know, kind of how the issue is, how important it is to Samamish, and start documenting it as a policy priority is going to be really important to the Samamish TMP. Something that we recognize as a part of the project is that, unlike many other communities, some of our most important projects as a part of the Samamish TMP may not be within Samamish. They may be priorities to coordinate regionally. So I think the intersections along 202 and those intersections in Issaquah are key examples. I don't know if that answered your question.
I think you helped me understand the challenges. One more question on the April timeframe. I know, at least in Samamish, you know, most of our schools have spring break at different times throughout April. So is that collection of data just like one particular week, or is it throughout April?
It's in, over a week. And we do schedule them when all the schools are in session.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I do see some mics that are on, but those could just be on.
I just leave mine on.
Okay, that's perfect. It's a pretty red light anyways. Okay. So just quickly going back. So existing intersection level of service is, I do want to make sure that this body is comfortable with the approach here, because this is something that is in your current level of service standards and is proposed to remain and be kind of the key level of service standard. So it's used to identify whether impacts of proposed development can be met through existing capacity or identify what additional facilities would be required to maintain LOS. So just as one of the commissioners mentioned, you know, just in terms of, well, you know, if we were to put a signal in there, it might be technically better from a level of service standard, but not necessarily better from the perspective of all drivers. I think that's a good, good observation there. Intersection level of service, why has council felt fairly comfortable with staying with intersection level of service? It's generally an accepted measure of driver experience during the PM peak hour. And a concern about the roadway segment measures, and we'll talk about those in a moment, were that they were using all-day traffic volumes. And council was very concerned about those missing, some of the peaking issues. Whereas with the intersection level of service, since it is measured just for the AM and PM peak hour, it really is a good barometer to how your system is performing during the most congested periods of the day. And I'm trying to see, you know, just last point there. I think the fact that there's good national standards and guidance for how we measure level of service is also something that council felt very strongly about, was that we were tying with kind of... that council felt very strongly about, was that we were tying with kind of that best practice. And that it's well documented and well defensible.
Can I ask, kind of related to that, if we're moving, presuming of what you're describing, we're moving away from any kind of segment or corridor, and moving towards more of a level of service based on intersections, what happens when intersections interact with each other, when there's backups over the course of several intersections? How does the measurement technique accommodate that system or that situation?
Before you answer that question, with great privilege, I'd like to extend the meeting till 9:00 PM.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to extend the meeting to nine. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. We'll extend the meeting to nine o'clock.
Okay, perfect. So that's a really good question. I want to ask if you're a transportation engineer by day?
No, but I do drive in Sammamish.
There's a lot of time to think when you're driving around Sammamish.
So from the perspective of traditional highway capacity manual methodologies along intersections, no, those tend to be isolated intersection operations. However, as we start as a part of the Transportation Master Plan, thinking about what are appropriate improvements along 228th, Issaquah Pine Lake Road, Issaquah Falls City Road, all of these major intersections or facilities, you know, East Lakes Sammamish Parkway, that is something we're going to be very mindful of. And there are tools to do so. It's called microsimulations. So Visim, Sim Traffic are a couple of the key software, and that's something that we're looking at as a part of that, to make sure that we're not missing kind of some of those intersection to intersection interactions.
Can I interrupt one second, Kendra? Kendra, I just had one question before you, and maybe you'll get to this. My big question is, what are you leaving out by excluding the corridor and the segment LOSs?
That's a good question. What we are leaving out, and I'll talk about this, I think, in a few moments, is it doesn't explicitly address the walking, biking experience. So what you have with your, your segment and corridor LOS today is that it does provide some capacity bump for when you include a sidewalk or a bike lane type facility. And so by just looking at the intersections, I think the intersections are pretty good proxy for driver behavior. So I don't think you're losing a lot from a driver perspective. But from a bike and ped perspective, you technically could be missing something on a concurrency standpoint. However, let me reassure you that those aren't being forgotten. And I think they're being better addressed as a part of the TMP. So when I kind of did a, I went to council in September, and I provided kind of an assessment of your current level of service and concurrency program. And while there was certainly the advantage of the current program, that it explicitly includes walking and biking modes in the current calculations, it has suboptimal outcomes in terms of how it addresses those modes and how it addresses infrastructure needs. It's kind of mechanical in terms of saying, okay, this road's got a lot of traffic volumes, so let's make sure that we're adding sidewalks, and let's make sure we're adding bike lanes. What I know as a bike and ped planner is that often the places where you want more bike and ped facilities are actually not on those super busy roads, happens to be on quieter, safer places. So what the TMP allows us to do, so what council direction has been to date, is to decouple those. And so council is by no means de-emphasizing those modes. But what they're doing is they're allowing us to have a little bit more freedom in terms of where we're planning walking and biking facilities. And I think that's really important, because as a part of the TMP, it's allowing us to take a fresh look of what would be best for Sammamish residents. And so yes, while it's not technically tying it to development review, it's giving staff a lot more flexibility to say, you know what, we've got enough east, north, south facilities, let's really work on improving our north, south, our east-west connectivity. And so yes, there's, what I say with concurrency, and I've said this to council a number of times, and I think I'll say it for the first time in front of this body, there is no perfect silver bullet system. It's really important to understand that we are not going to come up with a system that's going to absolutely fix every need. You need to think to all those other tools the city has at its disposal. Use each and every one of those tools, and that's how you're going to create your perfect transportation system.
Thank you for that.
So segments, as Sean has already kind of led us into, this is currently on the books. Cheryl, actually, I want to ask you, because this is, if we were doing development review right now, we would be looking at this as well. So until we get to a place where we've adopted a new system, this is, this is still in play. So capacity LOS is not based on kind of a level of service grade like ABCD, like our previous, or ABCDEF, like our previous system. It's based on a volume to capacity ratio. And so really what it's looking at is your average weekday daily traffic volume. So again, it's kind of, it's going out, the way that they measure that is they put tubes out on the road, and they count the number of drivers that are going over those tubes during a typical weekday. And it compares that to an estimated capacity of the street. And the estimated capacity of the street depends on things like number of lanes, functional classification of the road, lane width, the presence of a median or turn lane. It also relies on things like the presence of shoulders and bike lanes or non-motorized facilities. Something that, you know, really became a focal point for council over the past year is some of these non-traditional metrics, like your shoulders, your bike lanes, in your non-motorized facilities. And they really had a concern about us saying that that, actually accounting for that in your capacity. And while I think all of us could nod and say, yes, they provide a person trip capacity, it's, it's a little bit farther stretched to say that these sorts of facilities offer 1,000 or 2,000 vehicle trip capacity. And so it was the, the lack of defensibility and documentation of how this level of, these level of service standards were derived, that really were giving council pause. And I do want to say something before I completely trash these, because I don't intend to do this. These standards were put in place around year 2000 to 2004, before there were any sort of multimodal level of service metrics. So these were really kind of groundbreaking metrics for their time. And so city staff and the consultant team that put these together in the past, I think, should be lauded for being really creative. But I think, you know, the measures that, that Sammamish has had on their books have kind of just outlived their usefulness a little bit. And so that was where council had some concern. So from the, the last piece here, and really how concurrency measured is for the city, is not necessarily whether a certain segment, which again would be a fairly short segment of road, fails, but whether a corridor fails. And this map here is a little hard to see, but the city has a number, I don't know if you know the numbers, Cheryl, in terms of how many corridors?
Yeah.
Okay. There's, there's, there's lots of segments, and each of those segments, you add them up, you have three or four or five or seven segments, and they add up into a corridor. And you look at a volume weighted average of those corridors to see if they still have a volume to capacity ratio of over one. So again, what we're looking at is volume to capacity ratios. And so volume, of course, being the traffic volume over the course of the day, over an estimated capacity, which is again, how many trips can that road accommodate? And so from the perspective of the city's concurrency system, it would be okay if a short segment of road maybe didn't make it, so long as over a longer stretch of roadway that it was achieving that volume to capacity ratio. And again, this is a section of the concurrency measure that council has given us direction to get rid of. Again, because of a few reasons, mostly kind of that defensibility and the lack of intuitiveness with how things like the width of a shoulder, the presence of a bike lane, the presence of a sidewalk, really meaningfully adds to the capacity of a roadway segment. So.
I have a question about that.
Oh, absolutely.
Do you count the number of access points on a segment?
That's a really good question. It, access points play in, in terms of the functional classification of the roadway. So as you think about, and I don't have, there's this really nice graphic out there that shows how roadway functional classification works, and how it balances land access to speed. And so generally, your principal arterial roads tend to focus on providing a high-speed facility versus your local and collector streets, which focus on providing more access. And so that, that does play into kind of the functional classification aspect of the roadway.
That just seems crucial to me, especially when I look at things like East Lakes Sammamish Parkway.
Yes, absolutely. And that roadway, I will say, was one that the city has always been challenged with how to classify that roadway. Because, you know, clearly, while it's intended to provide kind of some slightly more of a regional access role, just given its length and where it connects to, it also has a ton of local access, given the people's residents that are on that roadway. So that's one that just doesn't fit neatly into any category. Okay. All right. So concurrency, last topic, and I want to make sure I make it within your guys' extension deadline here. So what is concurrency? And, you know, there's a lot on the screen here, but as, I like to think about concurrency, it's really at the most basic level. What the state has asked us to do is, the city sets a level of service standard. So, you know, this is how we expect our transportation system to perform. And as we grow as a community, as we expect more, as we accept more development, as our neighbors accept more development that come in and flood onto our roadways, are we maintaining that level of transportation performance that we said we would in our transportation element? That's at its basic level what concurrency is. Now, as the state helped, the state defines what concurrency means, concurrent with developments, got a little bit more flexibility in there. And it allows us not only to say, how are we performing now, are we meeting our level of service standards? But as we allow more development in, it allows us to take credit for projects that are in our funded six-year transportation improvement program. So as the city, something that we're doing with council right now, is starting to think about what is that 2019 through 2024 TIP? And the reason why we're looking at that 2019 through 2024 TIP is what intersection improvements and what roadway segment projects can we put in place to make sure that we're continuing to achieve the city's level of service standards? So the city does an extremely thorough job of tracking and monitoring concurrency. And you've got Steven Chen on your staff, which is just, I would say, a huge benefit, as he's been very careful in tracking all the development kind of applications that come in, and making sure that those development applications are being plugged into your model, so that you understand the number of trips that they're flooding onto your system, such that you can ensure whether those projects are impacting or not impacting your intersections and roadway segments. And so he does that test for all of these developments, and then issues a concurrency certificate. And if, and if it doesn't receive a concurrency certificate, then, you know, he's, he's, he's kind of flowing back to the development, saying, well, you've got a few choices. You can scale back your development, or you can fund transportation improvements that need to be put in place to make sure that we're maintaining our level of service standards. Once that concurrency certificate is achieved, the next step is that development pays its impact fee to make sure that they're helping to finance Sammamish's transportation system. So again, you know.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question about concurrency?
Absolutely.
And this may be a question for Mr. McIntyre instead, but throughout the time that I've watched this, I know that there's different groups and different people in Sammamish that have a difference of opinion about, about concurrency. On the one hand, they believe that the Growth Management Act and the concurrency requirements suggest that if, if the city cannot reasonably accommodate development within a reasonable budgetary process, that the city should stop development. And the other group seems to believe that what concurrency suggests is that whatever the development is, the city has to find a way financially to accommodate that development by being obligated to raise taxes or issue bonds. I'm wondering if, in the course of this discussion, there's been a common meeting of the minds or a thought about that amongst the council and the staff? Because it seems like kind of a fundamental underlying issue to a lot of this, whether the city is obligated to keep up, or, on the other hand, obligated to say stop?
So I'll, I'll answer, but I will like to get Kendra and Cheryl to jump in as well. That's a, that's a relatively complicated question. And to be honest, it goes back into what we've talked about in some other capacities before, about growth being just an incredibly complex animal. But the short answer is that effectively, the state law is more in line with the latter part of what you said, the second part of that, where we are obligated then to improve the system to accommodate our growth targets. So that is, that's probably the short answer to it, that we can't purposely fail to disallow development. So Kendra had mentioned at the beginning of the slides, kind of a brief synopsis of how the GMA relates back to transportation. And I think, maybe I'll let you kind of add on to that. But effectively, there are requirements in there that talk about the transportation network, and that we, we need to, we are obligated to improve it based on concurrency and LOS.
Yeah, I guess I think the simple, simpler version of that is the intersection you were talking about earlier, which is Sahali Way and 202. And if at some point that intersection creates a problem that the city can't solve, then is the city obligated to stop development? Or is the city obligated to spend money to force the state to? I think that that's been a fundamental question. A lot of people argue about that in various forums. And I'm curious if the city council has come to a common thinking about what that approach is supposed to be.
Well, actually, it's interesting, while there's been a lot of focus on Sahali Way and 202, that intersection, because it's not in the city, is not a part of our concurrency system. So we have roughly 43 concurrency intersections in the city, and they're kind of all the major ones you can think of within city boundaries.
I would, I have a hard time with that description, because if the traffic is backed up from that intersection
Absolutely.
to the intersections uphill in, along Sahali Way, then it not only influences, but creates a problem that we may not be able to solve within our system.
You're, you're, you are hitting on a point that we've heard a number of times through council. So that's, that's absolutely a valid point. What I would say is, that's where the, that's where these other tools. So concurrency isn't a particularly good tool for addressing that particular issue. This is where regional coordination and long-range planning, such as the Transportation Master Plan, and potentially impact fees, and I'll explain that in a second, could play a role. In that, from the perspective of the Transportation Master Plan, it's just really kind of getting our priorities in order. So the intention of the Transportation Master Plan would actually, in an ideal world, in my mind, would be five or six projects, we realize, these are the most important things, the city should put its chips down on these. And either it's a financial commitment, it's a strong staff commitment, it's a political commitment, these are the things that we are going to really focus on in the coming years, because these are the most important things. From the perspective of regional partnerships, then it's making sure that we have the right representation on boards like Eastside Transportation Partnership, like the Sound Transit Board, et cetera, to make sure that we're really pushing for these types of improvements. And then lastly, from the perspective of impact fees, and an answer, you know, we're investigating at this point, we don't quite have yet, is how, in terms of what sorts of financial resources can the city put towards important projects that aren't necessarily within the city's corporate boundaries? I have a question, and this is, this is a personal one, I'm not speaking for staff at this point, is, might the best use of the city's impact fee system, or impact fees, be on a few projects that maybe aren't within the city's boundaries, because they were so critically important to Sammamish residents' daily lives? Again, I'm not speaking for city staff on this one, this is one that I'd like to get legal counsel on.
When I'm watching the clock, and I want to be quick, two slides back, what is concurrency? The end of it, because you brought up impact fees, it says it occurs for new development at the time of occupancy. And then on the next slide, where does that fit within your, your progressive arrows?
Oh, in terms of these arrows here?
Yes.
Oh, are you wanting to say something, Doug?
Well, I could address that if I-
Okay.
I, I think, I think I understand the question, which is, when does occupancy occur? Is that correct?
Yes, or is it predicted ahead? That's when the fees collected, go ahead.
Yeah, so you've kind of identified the exact opposite ends of the spectrum. TCR, Traffic concurrency Review, is the very beginning of a project within the city, and the very end of that project is when it's certified for occupancy by our building department and by the fire department. So those are the absolute fence posts for the, for the spectrum of development. Does that answer your question? Is that, is that what the, what the question was? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick concurrency question. So reading through the back, project background in our, in our brief here, so it says that concurrently with land development means that improvements or strategies are in place. Now, talk about fence posts, right? I mean, if the road's built, or there's a strategy to build a road sometime in the next six years, that I see being a, a big issue with kind of narrowing that down a little bit would be probably extremely helpful because, jeez, that's, that's like a swinging target that's spinning around. I mean, how do you hit that type of thing, you know? So, so if there was some, if you could kind of help us understand that, because there's a big delta between those two, and then this, the, you know, having a strategy in place within six years and then building it after that, I mean, that starts really pushing things out. So tell me a little bit about how it works.
Well, I'll, I'll say I interpret strategy a little differently on that. Improvements, I think we all can kind of agree, that's a capital project that's in place. When we talk about strategies, and, and state law is, I think necessarily, a little vague to provide a little bit of leeway for jurisdictions, but strategies, as I think about it, it's not, it's not simply a, we plan to build that, but we don't have funding yet. It's recognizing that there are non-capital improvements that can be put in place that can help transportation or traffic conditions. So let me give an example. What if the city was able to negotiate with a school to change its bell time, to improve conditions at an intersection that might be really valuable? So that would be a valid strategy, or school pool, or if you had a large employer in the city and you were able to put a strategy in place such that maybe they, they shifted start times, or they allowed some of their employer, employees to work from home. So those are, when I think about strategies, those are, those are more intended to be the non-capital solutions, but they wanted to provide some leeway that it, it doesn't always have to be capital that, that responds to a, a problem, it, it can be a non-capital solution.
Sometimes concurrency can be met without, with just changing the start time, and that's all that it would take to meet that concurrency, that impact from that one project, first, let's say.
All, all the concurrency, concurrency is really a yes-no. Concurrenty is, are you meeting your level of service standard? Yes or no? And so how you achieve that concurrency doesn't care about it, it's very agnostic about it. So you can do it through building an extra turn lane, through adding a traffic signal as we're capital improvements, but if you can achieve it through a non-capital improvement or a strategy from the perspective of concurrency, that's completely fine.
Kendra, can I add another good strategy to, to think about, or that the city thinks about is timing of signalized intersections? Is that something that-
With no other questions, I'm going to continue on. And actually, we've covered this question in terms of concurrency pass fail, failure, or criteria, so I'm going to move on to the next. This was just a evaluation, actually, in answering Shauna's questions, I think I sort of covered this as well. This is just a slide back from my presentation to council back in September where we talked about of your existing programs, which includes intersection level of service as well as kind of this segment and corridor level of service. The advantages of it is that it does incentivize development of complete streets. Your current program has set you up for fairly high impact fees and having lots of these projects be eligible for impact fees. And by having a peak hour, at least PM peak hour level of service measure currently, we found that there was some proxy to driver experience. But on the other hand, the current program, which is what council, of course, is looking to update, had a number of disadvantages. The segment measures, and as I already measure, mentioned, with giving credit to non-motorized facilities, giving credit to shoulder facilities, they, they didn't connect well to driver experience. By using daily traffic volumes in the volume to capacity ratios in the segment calculations, council was very concerned that they were missing congestion peaking. So again, if you're looking at what is the volume on 228th over a 24-hour period, you're really missing, you know, what's going on from 5:00 to 6:00 PM or 7:00 to 8:00 AM. So they wanted us to move into more of a peak hour measure. As I mentioned earlier, I actually think your multimodal segment measures, I laud the city staff and the previous consultant for the creativity in coming up with that in the absence of any sort of national documentation 15 years ago. But council was very concerned about that, hey, times have changed, we've got more documentation in place, so they wanted to move into something that was a bit more defensible, given kind of the time and age that we're at in now. The, the current program of segments, and this is responding to what have we missed, I would say, while it did a good job of prioritizing north-south quarters by saying, okay, if we've got a traffic volume increase, let's make sure that we're providing a complete street template, but it didn't provide the city flexibility enough to make sure that it's actually providing the bike and pedestrian that you really need. And then lastly, just, just, there were some observations that the current system was overly complicated and it didn't do a good enough job of measuring school AM peak hours. So a lot of disadvantages to your existing program, and that's kind of what launched us into this current kind of process that we're in right now. And so council direction that we've received for concurrency, again, simplify the program, leverage innovative data sources, make sure we're looking at both the AM and the PM peak hours so that we're, we're considering kind of that school traffic impact that's, that's very tangible on Mamish's system. Use the TMP to make sure that we're planning for walking, biking, and transit, and that's something we're going to be doing over the next year, and make sure that we're not losing our capability to charge impact fees and have that great partnership that we currently have with development for delivering our transportation system. And so I'm really excited that I'm going to be here in front of this body.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but do we need to extend the meeting past nine o'clock?
Yes.
Do we want to need another, what, 10 minutes? I move to extend the meeting till nine-
9:30, because we need time for public comment.
9:30.
Second.
Well, you've given me license to talk for another 35 minutes, but I won't.
There's a, there's a motion and a second to extend the meeting to 9:30. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no, and we'll extend the meeting till 9:30. But that includes public comment.
Thank you for that distinction. So we're going to be here in front of you quite a bit of times over the next couple of months. Joint meeting we're looking at, April 30th, just so you know, given the direction we've gotten to date, staff and the consultant are working together to create an update of a draft, some draft comprehensive plan, transportation element amendments. We're planning to bring those to a joint session of city council and planning commission on April 30th. We also are working on code revisions, which we plan to bring on May 15th. And then we would be revisiting what we come up with in early June with a public hearing on June 21st, and then council would be kind of taking it, you know, kind of to the final adoption processes in July. So the last piece, I think we were kind of asked to give was just a quick update. We were at council on Tuesday night, so just so that you're clear on kind of where we are, we brought to council kind of a first step. They've given us direction to kind of go with this intersection level of service, as we said, level of service D for intersections along primary or principal arterials, but allowing for up to level of service E for those principal arterials that require more than three approach legs, and then for kind of our lower classification streets, level of service C. We took that direction and we came up with kind of what would be the intersections that are failing in 2024, which is of course our concurrency horizon, and we found that there were four intersections that would have those concurrency failures by 2024, and we came up with what are some potential remedies for those intersections? Generally, you know, we, we definitely had a pretty extensive conversation with council, but generally the guidance was stay the course, potentially some modifications here and there to individual intersections, but based on the direction we got, we're very much staying the course and, and coming back on April 30th with a comprehensive plan that follows that original guidance. So I don't know, Cheryl, did you have any more to add to what we heard from council on?
Oh, for council discussion.
I think, I think we're good.
Would you be able to share what you shared with the council, the four recommendations, the, the data that you used?
Oh, in terms of the intersections?
It's actually-
It's probably in their packet.
We, we could certainly do that. It is also online. Are, I don't know that we included all the inters, did we include all the intersections?
Yeah, this is what the presentation was, and it's posted with the, I don't remember where I got it, but you can go look it up pretty easily, yeah.
I have a question. What was that level of service E? Why did you allow that? Where did you allow that? What was the condition?
Absolutely. So that's actually under your current policy, and the only condition is that it would require more than three approach legs in any given direction. And the reason for that is that, you know, the city recognizes that it's a suburban community where while driving is really important, it's also important to make sure that we're not making our roads overly wide from the perspective of community character, from the perspective of being, of being able to cross the street. And so this was just maintaining the standard today, that the city has kind of set a threshold for how wide it will permit roads to go. And so, you know, when a road, you know, is at that, that length, we're, we're recognizing that before we're willing to widen it further, we want to make sure that we really truly need that, and so level of service E is kind of that standard.
Thank you. So, for example, 228th and Pine Lake Road intersection, that is a level of service E.
Okay, thank you.
Will, will part of our task be to look at the capital improvement projects, or will we not be looking at that yet? We'll just be looking at the actual transportation element?
Yeah, and I'm going to make a couple of points on that. Kendra, can you go back to the schedule? Yeah. So Kendra and Cheryl did a great job with the technical side, and I, I want to be sure that there's acknowledgement of the process as well as how this links back to our comprehensive plan, which is the important reason why planning commission is dealing with this, is because we are talking about a comprehensive plan amendment. And April 30th, our next meeting, is the first time the commission, as well as the city council, will get to look at the draft amendments. And one point I want to make about that is that it's actually being done under an emergency amendment, so there are a couple of policies that are going to be part of that amendment. So just keep that in the back of your mind. There, there will be additional edits to the background chapter to bring that part of the comp plan up to speed with this new approach for concurrency. So you'll see that in red line format, you'll have a chance to discuss it on the 30th, and then we'll move forward from there. And then separately, but related, you will have the code amendments that will follow that because this is a logical progression, but it's being kind of lumped together in acknowledgement of the relatively tight timeframe. And I did also, in addition to all that, want to just make a couple of comments, just to clarify for the record as well as for any commissioners in attendance, that Kendra has mentioned previous conversations with city council, and I just want to clarify that the, the conversation has been held at the council level in terms of where is, where are we pointing this ship, in a sense? And it's, it's also been tied to the development moratorium that's been, that was enacted in October, October 3rd of 2017. So this is part of that discussion overall about more broadly growth, but it has been kind of parsed out as the emergency piece of that. So that's why we're doing this under an emergency ordinance and emergency amendment, to address these very directly as a means to help, help address the city's concerns with the pace of growth throughout Mamish, which was one of, one of the reasons for the moratorium. So hopefully that provides you some context, so just in case you, you're kind of confused why city councils heard this first, and then it's going back to planning commission and then back up to city council, it's a little bit different, but that, that hopefully gives you the background on this. Let me know if there's any questions about that as well.
I have a few questions that kind of jotted down as, as the presentation went on. So the first thing was the, the feeling, kind of this level of service was this kind of this subjective feeling thing, and I was just wondering how that squared with, with actual rates of flow, right? I, I know that there's times when 405 is backed up and I'd like rather go down the country road at 30 than I, on the interstate at 30. It's an experience thing. I'm not getting home any faster, but I do feel better about my situation. So that would be kind of one of those things I would like a little just background on. And then on just the, kind of the flow control, the meters, the, a lot of the stoplights don't really allow the human to make a decision whether or not it's okay to take a ride on the right, on a red light, and it's really kind of taking that choice away and causing you to have to stay there. You're like, well, there's no one coming, why don't, why can't I just go, right? So that kind of, is there, are those types of elements part of the, the mix? And then the last question is about multimodal. What does that mean besides cars, pedestrian, bikes, and bus? I mean, do we have train? How forward-looking are we on multimodal? I guess that would be my three questions.
Okay, well, those are fun questions, I appreciate that. So the first question in terms of how do we measure level of service? At the intersection level, it truly is, so what we do is we have a model, it's called Syncro, it's a software, and with the software, the general things that it reads in are the lanes that you have and the geometries, the traffic controls, so whether or not there's a signal or not, whether there's a prohibition on right turn on red or not, and then the traffic volumes. And so the, the Syncro is careful enough that, you know, essentially what it's reporting for each of your intersections is how long the average driver is waiting, whether it's the average driver for all approaches, or if it's a side street stop controlled intersection, it's the driver at the worst approach. It doesn't know whether it's a country road or not, so I think that, that element of character is lost a bit on it, and so your level of service standard really doesn't take into account that, which I think is a very valid thing. I think about that, I, I commute into Seattle every day, and occasionally I'll divert, I probably shouldn't say it in a public setting, I'll divert into Mercer Island just to drive along a prettier route than, than just, just rotting on 90. But, you know, it, it feels a little different when you're driving through Mercer Island on the street, lined streets, so I get it. So from the perspective of, you know, how long you're waiting, clearly it, it doesn't know whether you're waiting in a pretty spot or not. So I guess for your first question, no, it doesn't take that into account. For the second, in terms of, you know, kind of, I'm being stopped, the, the software, we actually do program in kind of what is being directed to the driver. And so whether or not there's, you know, we can even put in parameters on whether there's driver compliance or not. Usually we assume very compliant drivers, but that is something that we do take into account. You added a third question, and I'm, I'm losing it now.
I was in motor.
Oh, multimodal, thank you. Totally different topic. Totally different topic. That hasn't been defined yet, but, because this intersection level, so it's clearly is just focused on drivers. But from the perspective of other modes, when we start thinking about those, they're often not measured mathematically, like vehicle delay. I mean, obviously, as you can see, that's, that's a very mathematical type of measure. But when you think about, is this a nice place to walk? Is this a nice place to bike? Am I comfortable taking transit here? Those factors usually have less to do with, well, you know, what is the square footage available for me on the sidewalk, because there's so many people on the sidewalk? We, we unfortunately don't have that situation, this isn't Beijing, or San Francisco, or New York City. But when you think about, is it a comfortable place to walk? Are there cars that, or are there trees that are buffering me from fast-moving traffic? Do I have enough space to navigate on the sidewalk? Are there benches? Is there shade for me? Is there weather protection? Those are the sorts of things. So when we think about walking, biking, and transit, when we set level of service standards, it's usually based on the built environment. We haven't gotten to that point yet, because we've been so focused on concurrency over the last nine months, but what I would say is, that is ultimately where we want to go, is measuring level of service based on the environment that we are providing for these, these sorts of users.
Okay, oh, last comment.
Can I ask one procedural question? Am I correct in recalling that we are only allowed to open the comp plan for modifications once a year, but then is this, because it's a, I might be recalling this incorrectly, but because this is an emergency, class size emergency, then will we also later in the year do the typical docket process? And I'm not sure if I'm recalling all that correctly, but I just want to clarify if that's the way that it'll work.
That's all correct, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I-
One, one quick question, I want to follow Commissioner Brooks' thing. When I read this first back on Tuesday and listening tonight, the word driver experience, I understand that, but you started the lute, and I don't need an answer tonight, but I think we should all think about it, what are the drivers' reactions? And what I'm seeing personally, and maybe it's because I've driven too many years, that because there's heavy traffic flow and there's congestion, people are tagging in on those left turns in front of you while it's a red light up there. I mean, we're all, I hope we all experienced that, and hopefully we're not doing it, but I'm seeing that, and that's, I didn't see it, say, three or four years ago, but I don't need an answer to that. I just wanted to express that we as drivers, or other drivers, do react.
Congestion forces drivers to do, to, to change behavior in, in many ways, and it, it relates to the local network, it relates to our highways and freeways as well, that when it's difficult to get around, you will find ways to try to get around that. So that's, it's a behavioral thing as well.
Okay, I think that wraps up the item for tonight. So the next item of business is public comment. So I'd like to invite the public to come up. We have, you have seven minutes to speak on this agenda item, and I think, yeah, you would only speak on this item, because you spoke during the public hearing for the sign code.
Correct.
So you would only speak on concurrency. I thought you meant that you wanted it to just be part of the record. Is that okay? Sorry, Mary, yeah, we can't, we can't do that. And no Paul? Okay, well, that's it then. Need a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. And the meeting is adjourned at 9:14.